Yes, sir.
All right, folks, we'll go ahead and get started. We have a public hearing scheduled, uh, ordinance twenty-four dash two dash one. Is there anyone here to talk about the, uh, public hearing, uh, from the ordinance twenty, twenty-four dash two dash one? Yes, sir. Please state your name, push your button, please.
Brian Lane, and the question is, and we're doing this because somebody's telling us to?
What we're doing?
We're modifying the ordinance because some state agency is telling us we've got to do this?
Yeah, so Christian, if you can come up and explain exactly where we're at. Thank you.
So, so what, oh, well, so, so we're adopting the, the, uh, International Energy Code, so we, what we do is follow what the state has adopted. So, the state adopted it last year, and so that's, that's where we're at. They, after we, we got an audit, they said that we had not adopted it yet, which I didn't, I wasn't worried that the state had adopted it, so, but, so, once they seen that, that we hadn't, you know, adopted the energy code, and they, they requested that we do, and gave us a amount of time to get it better, but that's, that's why we're doing it. There is a few amendments in the code that we put in that, uh, you know, that follow suit, so, that's why we're doing it.
Thank you. Anyone else to address, anyone else to address the, uh, in this public hearing code, uh, hearing ordinance twenty-two four dash two dash one? Christian, I want to talk just a little bit about exactly what the ordinance does, or just the summary of what the ordinance is.
So, so basically what the energy code is, is they're looking for, you know, to make sure that if you're building a new home, that you're putting in low-eed glass and, and things of that nature, the R values, insulation are up to, uh, a certain requirement, which on our, on our amendment that we've added, the R values that we've been using is R thirty-eight in ourselves. We are, we are staying at R thirty-eight. So, if you as the homeowner, if, if you wanted to put R fifty-four, you're more than welcome to do it. It's just that requirement has, has been left, uh, that was existing in our existing codes. That is one amendment we had in there that we left in. But what is there to just try and make homes more energy efficient? Uh, from, from what I've, you know, been studying through this code, and there's a lot to it, uh, you know, it doesn't look like it's going to add a terrible amount of expense to a new home. Uh, most people are putting in low-eed glass and double pan and, you know, things of that nature now, so, but it's just, uh, you know, to try to help keep the energy costs down and make your home, uh, you know, you know, more energy efficient and insulated and things of that nature.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mansell or Codes Inspector?
I don't know that much about building or anything of that nature, but, uh, say you was putting, uh, say, uh, R fifty-four, like you said, uh, uh, insulation, is that a lot more expensive than just regular?
Yes, so, you know, it's, you know, if we done, normally R thirty-eight, we have about fourteen inches of insulation. If, if you went up, oh, up to twenty inches, of course, you're paying, you know, and, but what we've done-
The number is made in inches.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's not our value, but, you know, of course, like, with two to four walls, you know, you're still allowed to do R thirteen in the wall. You can do the spray foam that they come out with now, which increases that R value to up to about a nineteen in a three-inch cavity. And, but that's your choice, but, you know, they're not making us do that. Uh, we're still able to do R thirteen on two-to-four wall and a R nineteen in a two-to-six wall.
I didn't, I didn't know that the thirteen, nineteen, or whatever, was actually inches. I just thought that was numbers, what they was calling it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the insulation value of, 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 isn't it? So, it, it, it's not actually inches, but I'm just saying, like, you know, normally on a R thirty-eight, you'll have about fourteen inches. The deeper you go, the better your R value comes.
Well, the better insulated, the cheaper the light bill.
There you go. That's, that's the whole idea behind it. And, and I am just now getting into this energy code, and so, you know, I, I, I mean, there's just a lot to learn, and I'm, you know, uh, I haven't had time to really dig in yet. We're just getting adopted, and, uh, so, you know, there may be some other things that come up that, that will add some cost to the homeowner, but we'll, we'll accept that. Lots of, whatever the show is what we're going to do.
A long run of wasted money.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening to Mr. Penchet.
How are you doing?
Doing all right. Uh, I know you just came in. We're discussing, uh, anybody want to speak on this public hearing, uh, twenty-four dash two dash one, uh, for this, uh, we're going to have a second reading on the ordinance. Does anybody else would like to speak? Any other questions for Mr. Mansell? Okay, uh, we will close the public hearing, and we will call the meeting to order. If you would please stand for the prayer of the political speakers. Your gracious heavenly Father, we thank for this day and all the many blessings. We thank you once again for letting us come together as a board, Lord, and we pray we do everything in accordance with that will. Lord, we pray for our country and especially the men and women that serve it, and especially the ones on foreign soil that we put their hands around and bring them back on safe and sound, and we that will. We pray that you give us the wisdom and knowledge that it takes to move our city and going forward in the right direction, and, uh, we'll do everything in accordance with that will. Pray for the city and especially the ones that we know are sure and go back with much wanted help that we that will. Forgive us of our sins, Christ, and we pray. Amen. Chief Dow, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for our own.
Thank you, Chief Dow. All right, uh, we do have a forum tonight. Uh, we got, uh, four out of six, and that, uh, is, is good enough for a forum tonight. Remember, we've got some members that, uh, that are out of town and some skilled, maybe out in, uh, sick leave, and, uh, but we do have a forum, and, uh, Ms. Phillips, can you do her comp, please?
Alderman Clapp. Alderman Dale.
Present.
Vice Mayor Dotson.
Present.
Alderman Elder. Alderman Rinkford.
Here.
Alderman Lender.
Here.
All present, but Alderman Elder and Alderman Clapp. Uh, just reminder that when you speak, please, so the general public can hear, and it also goes out on live stream, so we'll push your button on the microphone. We appreciate you. Uh, need a motion to approve the minutes of last month's meeting. Motion made by Alderman Dale. Second by Alderman Bill Lender. Any discussion? All four of them. Motion let know to say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, life sign, motion passed. Uh, can you public comments, uh, do you want to address the, uh, quarters?
Yes. I find it interesting, Arnold Walker, by the way, uh, that it's interesting, we have eleven or twelve people running for elected offices for Alderman and Mayor. And one of them here, except Rex Dale, I mean, I find it terrible that they have no interest in being here for at least the past two or three years. That's sad.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Uh, additions or deletions to the agenda? I'd like to add, uh, to do the agenda, uh, we got some lawnmower bids, um, to as number five. Uh, also, uh, I have, add number six, the traffic light, number six, add it to the agenda for discussion as well. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to add those to the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Bill Lender.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson. Any discussion? All four of them. Motion let know to say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, life sign, motion passed. We, we have, uh, five and six, five being lawnmowers, six being traffic light number six. Under old business, uh, the second reading of ordinance twenty-two four dash two dash one, we did have a public hearing. Uh, Mr. Mansell, uh, discussed exactly, uh, what the ordinance was all about, and, uh, had one citizen to, uh, ask a question, and I believe that was answered. And, uh, we're ready to, uh, I've received no phone calls, only from both of you all have or not, so we're ready to pass this motion on the second reading.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Rex Dale. Any discussion? All four of them. Motion let know to say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, life sign, motion passed. Item number one, downtown revitalization, uh, Mr. Gene Gant. Come on, Gene.
Have a quick update for you today. Um, we have, uh, we, we don't know, we lost one member of the downtown redevelopment committee, Mr. Todd Matthews, who he passed recently. Uh, we would like to add Ms. Jennifer Shaw to the DRC, uh, if that's acceptable with everybody. Um, our group is, is acceptor, and I think she'd make a good member for our group. Uh, project updates, the courthouse, we're waiting as any day for a number to proceed with construction, according to Mr. Evans. Uh, he said that that should be forecoming soon. I think we keep saying soon, but now it's any day, so that's better. Uh, Church Street project should start, uh, Monday, Wednesday meeting, so that's about to get underway, again, Wednesday meeting. Uh, sidewalk project is progressing. There's still some T-Dot work and things of that nature that are going on, but it's, it's progressing nicely, according to, uh, Mr. Evans. You have in front of you, I've provided you with a copy of our proposed budget for this year for downtown revitalization, uh, just for your review until next meeting, uh, and we'll ask for a motion to approve it at the next meeting. If there's any question, we can answer them. Other than that, go ahead.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Gant. Uh, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to add, uh, as recommended by the DRC Chairman, Gene Gant, uh, as recommended by Chairman Gene Gant, to, uh, add Ms. Jennifer Shaw to the DRC Committee, uh, during her motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Bill Lender.
Second.
Second by Alderman David Langford. Any discussion? All four of them. Motion let know to say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, life sign, motion passed. Uh, also, uh, to just add just a little bit to, uh, where we're at on South Church Street, we have been waiting on the, uh, precast catch basins to come in, and they're in now, uh, and they are absolutely huge. So, uh, uh, our, our front end loader had a little difficult time, uh, picking it up. Uh, they're located down on South Church Street right now, the old shirt factory property. We're going to go down and look at it. So, uh, we think we has got a, a business that, uh, can lift it up, uh, sit it down in the hole, and that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. Uh, that's what we've been waiting on, uh, whether we're getting, uh, we plan on getting those in the ground, uh, and starting construction. So, we're, uh, seems like we're always under delay, but I think we are really about to get to it. We are sending out, uh, emails, uh, to, uh, the merchants and, uh, on the square and on downtown South Church Street. Anyone that is not getting those, uh, please let me know. We assign you up, uh, and you will be with us step by step. So, that's, that's what we are on the South Church Street project. Item number two is Mr. Adam Poe, uh, from Highlands Economic Development. I don't see Mr. Poe here tonight. Uh, I know he was here at the last meeting that got canceled, so Ms. Phillips, if you'll put him on the agenda for April first. That's not April fourth, Jill E. Development. We are meeting on April first. So, uh, and just add him. So, we'll go on, uh, to item number three, ordinance twenty, twenty-four dash three dash one, resuming property located on Jamestown Highway. Christian, can you talk about that, please?
Yes, this, this particular parcel, uh, went before the planning commission. Uh, it was asked to be rezoned from an industrial, uh, to a commercial, uh, the gentleman that is, uh, that had brought it before us is here tonight, Mr. Christopher Emery. Uh, he has plans on building a commercial building there with a, uh, a residential mix, and, uh, it passed through the planning commission. We had no opposition to it. Uh, if anybody had any questions, Mr. Emery, on what he's doing, he is prepared. Uh, he has some drawings to show you, uh, what aesthetically that, that he will be building there. Uh, I know that may not be necessary at this time, but he is prepared to present that to you.
Yeah, I think he, I think he can give a quick briefing to the board if he's present, and if we'd like to do so, Christian, or you can for him, or how we'd like to do it.
Christian, again. Oh, that's my idea worked last time. Okay, uh, Christopher Emery, uh, behalf of the current owner, which we are in the process of becoming the owner of the property. Uh, the idea is to build a building with, uh, mixed, uh, uses, Christian said, uh, commercial residence. The commercial side would be a, basically a smoothie, uh, if you will, uh, smoothies, salads, food-related items, and then residential would be for my wife and I to, uh, reside in.
Okay. Any, anybody have any questions, or anything? Okay.
Just curiosity, just curiosity, where exactly are we talking about?
It's between the Smart Shopper and the Overton, um, motel, between the two. There's a right way and a left, and then Smart Shopper.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right, so I'll entertain a, uh, motion, uh, for the resuming of the property located on Jamestown Highway as recommended by the planning commission.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Alderman Rex Dale.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bill Lender. Any discussion? All four of them. Motion let it know to say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, life sign, motion passed. Item number four, Livingston Police Department Chief Ray Smith.
Good evening, Lord, Mayor Alderman. Uh, we have come to a ending on our, uh, gov deals and got everything sold. Our vice captain, uh, Gordon, passed you out paper, just got the numbers and stuff on it. We have worked very hard and built it together, left everything that had no use. It's time to clean up, move on, uh, closed out, uh, the, the work we don't like to use, all the selling of anything that was left in evidence or anything like that could be gotten rid of with clearance of all that took place. End of this matter, uh, we were able to raise, after a selling of everything that we had there, we think we raised eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. So, that's a lot of assets. Wish that we could hang on to that, but you know, there's always a need.
I have a weird suspicion you've got the need.
Uh, we, we do. I want to ask, uh, uh, I want to ask Captain up here to speak about the three things we like to spend those on.
Evening, Lord. Uh, as you can see on the paper there, uh, the, one of the first things we'd like to, to purchase would be laptops, uh, for each of our officers to go in the patrol cars, uh, so they can do their reports and everything out in the field to be out in the eyes of the public more, uh, and not having to come back and sit at the office. Also included in that is a cell phone for each of the officers, uh, to have a hotspot where they can connect their laptop to that and, uh, connect to our server inside the police department. Um, in the book that y'all have has a, is it broken down more? Uh, if y'all had time to read that, or if you looked at it, and won't have any questions about that. Uh, the price of that would be thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, uh, that would come out of that. Uh, that would pay for every, all the laptops for all the patrol cars and would pay the first year of the cell phone bill. Uh, the cell phone bill is broke down in the back, back here to, for a year, uh, which would be through FirstNet, uh, FirstNet AT&T is ten thousand, eight hundred dollars a year. Uh, and we'd ask that the city, after this first year, the city would pick that up and, and pay for that on after. Uh, we purchased five new radar units. The radar units we have are getting old, uh, they're used and they're starting to go out. Uh, we purchased five new radar units at the amount of ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, we would ask that we buy new desks for our dispatch office. The ones in there is old. They're getting, half the drawers are taped shut, and they just don't look as steady equipment. Uh, that's the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventeen cents, and, uh, to update the radio equipment with Chief Dow and Chief Smith can, can figure in more about the, the radio equipment for dispatch, that amount would be thirty thousand. Total amount would be eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventeen cents. We also had a sale of seized guns that we sold, uh, in the amount of ten thousand dollars with that and the gov deal sale. The total amount from the sales is eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents.
So, we get a motion, uh, to set that as second, and we have a discussion.
How is the motion approved?
Motion to approve, uh, Vice Mayor Ken Dotson. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Bill Lender. Uh, anybody have any, any discussion, any questions for Chief or Captain? So, I think, uh, of course, the, the, the money, uh, will be, it will go in general fund and come back out of the general fund. All right, we have, uh, is there any questions for the Chief or Captain? Okay, if there are no questions, uh, we've got a motion in the second. Uh, roll call, Miss Phillips.
Alderman Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Dale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dotson.
Yes.
Alderman Lender.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Uh, now we have a, uh, big police unit package. Chief?
Yes, sir. Always thanks. Uh, I like to comment that it needs to come, needs to go. It better be gone next, you know, but a lot of hard work. So, things don't last forever. I don't know if y'all noticed, kind of the vehicles that we have in our administration and that we got, we was able to write a grant, grant was wrote, and we said we'd get patrol cars. I am coming to the board tonight to ask to go into the drug fund and purchase a couple of vehicles that would go into administration. And these vehicles, I would like to have the opportunity to go down to, uh, Wilson Motors, which is state bid, which is in Lebanon, and look at the vehicles and see which one of these two that was sufficeable to use for the lipstick city police department, use of the city itself. And instead of just picking one, I'd like to go look at it and see if it's what we really want.
Okay, yeah, uh, so the, uh, what we're needing is, uh, the approval of a hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents. That would be the three, uh, administrative vehicles, uh, that, uh, we go. We did talk with, uh, UTM tasks, uh, on, on this, and putting out a drug fund would be absolutely no problem. Uh, so, uh, we have got, uh, Mr. Rex Bart was one, uh, we talked to, was it Rex?
Yes.
It was Rex, okay. And, uh, so, uh, we do have the money in the drug fund, and we, this, and this is qualified out of the drug fund, and, uh, we got a motion, uh, we have a motion second, I guess. So, I need a motion in the second to have more discussion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Bill Lender.
Second.
Second by Alderman Rex Dale. Any discussion?
There's a hundred, sorry, thank you. There's a hundred and two, nine twenty-nine fifty in the fund, but you're only asking for permission to purchase, to purchase two of these, and the worst case scenario would be like ninety-eight or ninety-seven. Right, okay. Make it your understanding.
I'm sorry, I didn't explain it.
No, no, I think you need it.
I think I made your understanding.
I think I was giving you a little bit more leeway. He's a banker.
We take the two highest numbers down together.
All right, uh, so we got a motion in the second. Any more discussion? Roll call, Miss Phillips.
Alderman Dale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dotson.
Yes.
Alderman Lender.
Yes.
Alderman Rinkford.
Yes.
Motion passed. Uh, thank you, there, Chief. Do you have anything else? All right, thank you. Uh, item number five is the lawnmower bids, uh, we received. We did advertise for bid, and, uh, we got one bid in, uh, with Mountain Farm International, um, and, uh, for twelve thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars without delivery, uh, twelve, eight, eight, nine, uh, with delivery. And we'll probably go get it, uh, out Crossville, Mountain Farms, out Crossville. So, uh, we did advertise, we got one bid, uh, I'll entertain a motion to accept this long bid.
So, move it.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Dotson.
Paul second.
Second by Alderman Bill Lender. Any discussion?
Yeah, this one, is it just for, what are we using this one for? Is it specifically for the airport?
Yes. It will be at airport this week. All right, roll call, Miss Phillips.
Vice Mayor Dotson.
Yes.
Alderman Lender.
Yes.
Alderman Rinkford.
Yes.
Alderman Dale.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number six, uh, I think as many of you are aware, uh, there has been a issue at traffic light number six on, uh, West Main, uh, intersection of West Main and Bibbrey Street. Uh, so I talked to T-Dot, uh, and they have sent me a letter. It says, Mayor Hayes, T-Dot performed work along State Route fifty-two, Church Street, and State Route eighty-five, West Main Street in Livingston, to upgrade several curb ramps in advance of the future resurfacing project. The purpose of the curb ramp upgrades was to replace existing pedestrian facilities and new facilities that were in, that were in compliance with current Americans with Disabilities Act ADA guidelines. The work involved in this project required the contractor to remove and pull back new curb ramp portions of sidewalk and curb under. During the removal process, traffic signal loops that were, uh, within the curb ramps were damaged, but the original contract had no items to repair the signal loops. Specifically, on February sixth, the loop wires near Walgreens were damaged, and the light was forced to function at a set time and without traffic detection. T-Dot worked with the contractor to execute a change order to repair the loop wires and have a new subcontractor to the project. The project supervisor, Brian Moore, spoke with the contractor today, and they promised to begin the work tomorrow, which is today, March nineteenth. March nineteenth, regardless of the subcontract status due to repair, work begins tomorrow as promised. Work should be complete to repair the affected tra- traffic signal by March twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. I apologize for any inconvenience that has caused Livingston residents, motors passing through Livingston, and yourself. I appreciate your concern for your city and your consistent attention to resolving the issue. Please convey my apologies for the time it has taken to repair the loop wires, and feel free to give my contact information as needed. Boles Hoskins, uh, PE District Twenty-seven, Engineer, Region Two, Operations District Twenty-seven, Corporal Tennessee. So, I just wanted to give you an update on that. Rocky, can you come on up to the podium and, uh... So, in a nutshell, uh, folks, the city does own the traffic line. Uh, T-Dot did, uh, as the letter states, uh, did, uh, take the loops out, and, uh, there was an expense involved in repairing the loop that we didn't tear up and mess up to begin with. A project that, according to its known, the- A project that, according, that's known in the letter here, but according to him, it should have been fixed within a few days. But the issue with getting this contract approved to the state of Tennessee took a lot longer than they thought and they apologized for that. For us to repair that loop, Rocky, what was, uh, Rocky takes care of the traffic lights and does a great job at it, by the way. Tell us how much the price was when we prepared ourselves.
I spoke to them today and they were estimating somewhere between thirty and forty thousand to repair that intersection down there.
Yeah, and that would have been at our expense, had we done it.
Correct.
Yeah, and it is our understanding that, uh, uh, we was not notified when they was working on these ADA lamps, so we did not spot it for them, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to give everybody just a little update. Uh, now they have, uh, been down there today, uh, and they are in the process of, when will the work be complete, Rocky, do you know?
As a five-third of the season, they had three loops in out of fourteen loops. They're planning on getting back, uh, about nine o'clock in the morning to start and they're scheduled to be finished by Thursday evening.
Completely.
Completed and hooked up and back in operation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And right now, Rocky, they're in a rotation. Can you talk about that a little bit, please?
Yes, so there is a MU TCD booth that, uh, governs the flow of traffic that dictates how many seconds that each light is allowed to go on. So when that light was put in, that was all predetermined by the engineers and that's the way it's set to go by. So it gives each turn movement so many seconds of movement time before it rotates to the next one. And down there, we've got six movements, so it takes a while to go through that process.
Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it. According to the local newspaper, it takes exactly one minute and forty-nine seconds and five seconds for rotation, according to the OC.
It was longer.
Mr. Penncutt says he don't agree, but you're a man, Mr. Penncutt. So I don't know, a little debate here, but anyway, uh, uh, that's where we are and, uh, I, 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 obviously, we all apologize for, uh, what has happened and it, it has been an inconvenience, uh, folks, and we apologize for that. We didn't do it, uh, and, uh, we didn't want to spend forty thousand dollars to repair something that we didn't do. Uh, but, uh, unfortunately, it's been like that three or four weeks and probably two or three weeks too long. Uh, but, uh, as you heard in the report, should be complete, uh, by Thursday and, uh, it'll start hitting those signals and it should be, uh, a lot faster than a minute forty-nine seconds and minute forty-nine and five seconds, so, uh, that's where we are. Okay, uh, I have no other business, any other business with the council?
Mayor, we forgot when they're playing the building up at the range.
Yeah, go ahead.
Always in the area to be somewhere else, I think. So the, the thing that I need to tell you about is the, we have, uh, a great training grounds up there and it's a great asset for the city of Livingston and officers and other partners to come and train at. Uh, at one point in time during the early, I guess, late fall or, or like part of the winter here, early, early winter, we had a bad storm come through, which we had a big windstorm come up and ripped the roof off of our training classroom and all and, uh, damaged it beyond repair. Insurance company came up, uh, and totaled it out and, uh, we're also asking, we're gonna tear it down ourselves and what's there, I'm asking for permission to take that and sell the scrap that can be sold to cooperates and the rest of it just be hauled off. There's a, it's got, the insurance has covered us to, uh, get rid of the, the trash and all and be able to do that. And the second part of that, I'm asking to remove the second, uh, classroom area and sell it either on gum deals or however to get rid of it. Uh, as service purpose, there's other plans, a lot to look at later on, about doing something different. So I'm asking for one permission to sell the remaining building that has not got damaged and permission to sell, uh, the metal and stuff out of the old building that did get damaged and haul it all and get rid of that stuff and thank you, please.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, you've, uh, heard what the chief would like to do. Is there a motion, uh, to have his request?
Sure, motion to, uh,
Motion to Vice Mayor Dotson, Ken Dotson make the motion.
So.
To approve it, second by Alderman David Langford. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know it's saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, life sign. Any other business with the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll do it.
Motion made, made by Alderman Bill Linder, second by Alderman Rex Dale. All for the motion, let it know it's saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, life sign, we're adjourned.